Good evening, everyone. We're going to commence the August seventh meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Welcome everyone this evening. Before we get going here, let's do a roll call. Looks like Artie's not here, but he's potentially late. Otherwise, we have a forum or good, right? And Tara's not here. We knew she was not attending. All right. Roll call and then minutes. I abstain because I was not here last week, but do we have any edits or motions for last month's minutes?
I don't have any edits and I moved to approve the minutes from the July 10th meeting. Second.
First, second, all those in favor? All right. Minutes pass. Any organizational procedural items staff? And there's no unfinished business that I'm aware of. We will proceed to this month's case. We have two this evening. First one, after I read the preamble in a minute, we have two cases this evening. Paul, do we have all the some people writing and everybody's in registered? Okay. So make sure I make that announcement that if you want to speak this evening, you have to fill out a card back there. All right. So first we'll do the preamble, which is the zoning board of appeals is charged with the responsibility of granting variances to ordinance requirements. After determining whether there exists an undue hardship upon an applicant. In determining whether or not to grant a variance, the board shall apply the criteria specified in the city code of ordinances by the facts of each case. The zoning board of appeals does not create zoning, nor can it change zoning. Matters brought before the zoning board of appeals are to be concerned only with variances from requirements of the zoning ordinance, assigned ordinance and development and environmental ordinance. The board has no authority to grant variances for use, density or height. Further, the board hears cases requesting an appeal to a staff interpretation or decision on these same ordinances. Final decisions of the zoning board of appeals may be appealed by petitioning the superior court of DeKalb County within thirty days after the decision here is rendered. And with that, we'll proceed to ZBA twenty five dash twelve. Homeowners at Bafferton Way are requesting a variance from chapter twenty seven, section fifty eight to allow a home addition to encroach into the rear setback.
All right. Good evening, everyone. So the subject property is zoned R fifty and it's point two acres. And the you can see here in the photos where the proposed home addition would go. There's a stream buffer that crosses crosses a small portion of the southwest property. You can see that on the site plan to the right. The proposed project does not encroach into the stream buffer, therefore no stream buffer variance is needed. And there's existing gravel in the rear yard and on the western side yard. And that will be removed as part of the proposed project, so as not to exceed the maximum allowable lot coverage, therefore it's not shown on the site plan. So the applicant proposes to construct a three hundred and ninety-three square foot two-story home addition to the rear of the home that's shown in red on the site plan to the right. The addition will consist of a walkout basement on the bottom level and a bedroom and bathroom on the main level. The proposed project will encroach into the thirty-foot rear setback by a maximum of eleven feet, prompting a variance request, and it will be in line with the existing covered porch and deck that you can see. The proposed elevations are shown to the left. So the subject property meets the minimum standards for lot area and width. However, as a pie-shaped lot, the property has a constrained buildable area due to its tapered lot lines, making it challenging to make improvements to the existing home without encroaching into the setbacks. Additionally, the existing house already encroaches into the rear building setback, and the new home addition would maintain the same eleven-foot encroachment as the existing covered porch and deck. So staff considers that to be a relatively minor request. The proposed project appears to be the minimum necessary to afford relief and would not constitute a grant of special privilege. The proposed home addition is fairly small and would not appear out of scale for the subdivision. Without accounting for the unique conditions of the site, the strict application of the setbacks would prevent incremental changes to the property over time, which staff considers a practical difficulty. So overall, staff finds that the project would not be detrimental to the health, safety or welfare of the public, and that the request meets the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance. So we received eight letters of of support and those were included in the packet that went out to you all. And so based on those reasons, staff is recommending approval of the request, subject to our two standard conditions shown here.
Thank you. Any initial questions for staff? Okay. Would the applicant care to address the board and state your case for the variance? Just state your name and address, please.
Yeah, my name is Furman AG, twenty four seventy-five Bafferton Way. My wife and I are the homeowners. We've been told by our friend, the registered nurse, that we need to be prepared to age in place. We, my wife has rheumatoid arthritis and has a very hard time getting up and down the stairs. We need a need a bedroom on the first level. And we, there's no other place to put it. So we either have to do this or move and we don't want to move. So I'm happy to answer any questions anybody has.
Okay, thank you. Is anyone here? I know there's several letters. Anyone here want to speak in favor of this application? We, again, we have the the record of the all the letters, so. Anyone want to speak in opposition? I think so. All right, with that, board questions for the applicant? Okay. Beautiful. Do I have a motion? I think he's got questions.
I don't have any questions, but I do just want to reiterate, as Allegra pointed out, that we have a really unusual shaped lot that limits the practicality of putting this addition anywhere else on the property, and it's not going to extend any farther into the setback than the existing porch and patio already do or porch and deck and it's minimal.
Yeah, in general, there's no further encroachment, right? It's stayed and then we've seen this a lot and then what do you with it, especially with the with the stream buffers in particular? Is, you know, there's no further encroachment, but some people are already encroaching. And that's common. So the fact that it's encroaching eleven feet is not really pertinent, right? It's we're not extending them. Yep.
And they're going to remove a bunch of gravel in the back to, you know, to limit any additional impervious surface or to counteract any additional impervious surface.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, so with that, I move to approve the request for a variance from chapter twenty seven, section fifty eight to allow a home addition to encroach into the rear setback with the following conditions. Number one, construction must be in substantial compliance with the submitted site plan prepared by Travis Pruitt and Associates at Inc. and dated May twelfth, twenty twenty-five in appendix A. And two, if construction has not commenced within two years of the granting of this variance, approval shall be void.
Thank you. Have a second? All right, we have a nomination to approve in a second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Congrats. Thank you. You bet. Proceeding on to the second case this evening, which is ZBA twenty five dash thirteen, property at fourteen sixteen Noreen Circle, requesting a special exemption from chapter twenty seven, section one, four, three dash three to allow relief from contextual lot characteristic requirements, including lot area and width for a two-lot subdivision.
All right, so just as a quick reminder, special exceptions are super similar to variances. They overlap with three of the review and approval criteria. You have those in front of you in your packets if you want to refer to to them, but that's basically the only difference is that they have a couple fewer review and approval criteria. If you have any questions about that, let me know. So the subject property is zoned R one hundred and it's point nine six acres. You can see it in the survey to the right. So the addition, the original nineteen fifty-four plat for the Pine Forest subdivision indicates that the subject property was intended to be developed as two lots. For unknown reasons, the subject property was developed as one lot. But that explains why it's so large. The property is well vegetated and the existing house on the subject property, which you can see to the left, is currently unoccupied. So the applicant is proposing to demolish the existing home, subdivide the existing property into two lots and construct two new homes, one on each lot. So when you're doing a subdivision, there's two aspects that you have to keep in mind from a zoning perspective. One is the standard R one hundred lot standard, since this neighborhood is R one hundred. And the other is contextual lot characteristics. So beyond even the R one hundred standards for for, you know, lot width and everything, you have to meet the contextual lot characteristic regulations. And so there's three of them, area, frontage and width. And they're based on the averages for the adjacent lots. And so there's four properties in this case that were used to determine the averages. They're all to the west of the subject property. They're all to the left of it, excuse me, on the screen. The reason for that is that the two on the other side have frontage on a different street. They face shambly Dunwoody Road, so we're not including those in our calculations. So you can see here, and I'll get into the specifics of the of the averages in a little bit. But you can see here that there's these four here where we took the average frontage area and width and used to determine the lot characteristics for the two proposed lots. As a quick note, since I'm going to touch on it a lot in my presentation tonight, this lot thirteen eighty-four Noreen Circle is much larger and wider than the other lots. And that skews some of the averages, as you'll see. So the contextual lot standards dictate a media, a meat, excuse me, a minimum lot frontage of a hundred feet each. And the two proposed lots meet this. You can see all of the dimensions on the site plan to the right. As a quick note, the difference between frontage and width, the frontage is the property line, basically, that faces the street. The width is a line, the way you calculate width is you take a line that's set back from the property line, the distance of the of the front setback. So in this case, you would take a line that would go thirty-five feet back. For lots that are sort of rectangular shaped, sometimes the width and frontage can be the same or really close. But for pie-shaped lots such as, I'll return to it, thirteen eighty-four Noreen Circle, the width can be much larger than the frontage. If you have any other questions about the difference between frontage and width, don't hesitate to ask. I'm happy to explain it further. So in this case, while it meets for the average frontage, it does not meet for average area and width. So the average area is thirty-two thousand sixteen square feet. The two proposed lots do not meet that. They're at twenty thousand five hundred square feet and twenty-one thousand one hundred square feet respectively. Additionally, the average width is a hundred and eleven feet. And the two proposed lots do not meet that either. Their proposed width is a hundred feet each. And so that's prompting the special exception request. That's why this is in front of you all this evening. So the proposed so the proposed subdivision does meet the general minimum standards for the R one hundred district. And they meet the contextual lot frontage requirement. However, they do not meet the contextual lot area requirement. And so you can see here that thirteen eighty-four Noreen Circle is much wider than the R one hundred minimum width due to its pie shape. The contextual lot characteristic requirements were created to ensure that new properties are not out of character with their surrounding neighborhoods. But they don't, but they aren't written to consider the nuance of every particular situation of every property in Dunwoody. And so there are several other wider lots in the Pine Forest subdivision. Those are marked in yellow on the diagram to the right, ranging from a hundred and twenty feet to a hundred and fifty feet. But there were also several lots that are significantly narrower at about fifty feet to ninety feet. And so overall, the width of most of the neighborhood's lots is less than this case's contextual width requirement of a hundred and eleven feet. And that's shown by the stars in red on the diagram to the right. And so you can see that there's a lot more red stars than there are yellow stars. So most of the lots in this neighborhood do not have a width of a hundred and eleven feet. And therefore, the proposed width of each lot at a hundred feet is in line with the surrounding neighborhood. So thirteen eighty-four Noreen Circle is also substantially larger than the R one hundred area requirement. So it's twice what's required per code. And so that skews the average pretty substantially. There are a couple of other larger lots in the Pine Forest subdivision. You can see them shown in yellow on the diagram to the right. However, most of the lots are significantly smaller, so ranging from about twenty thousand square feet to twenty-eight thousand square feet with two that are even smaller than that. And so this is especially true for lots that are located along street sections of the street, similar to the subject location. So overall, the area of most of the neighborhood's lots is less than the contextual area requirement of thirty-two thousand sixteen square feet. And therefore, the proposed lots at twenty thousand five hundred fifty square feet and twenty-one thousand one hundred square feet would not be out of character with the surrounding neighborhood. So in this case, the strict application of the contextual lot characteristics creates a practical difficulty by significantly limiting the development potential of the subject property. And staff finds that the resulting subdivision would be harmonious with the surrounding area and would not be detrimental to surrounding properties. And so based on these reasons, we are recommending approval of the request, subject to our two standard conditions.
Great, thank you. Questions initially?
Yeah, I do. I have one. So can you go back to the slide where you've got the one yellow highlight, two red? The criterion, so the frontage makes sense to me. The air, how the, I guess, this hitting one of three versus two, three versus three, three, what? I guess this, what impact does that have on the recommendation in terms of, I'm trying to make sense of, I agree that the character looks, you know, it almost just falls in line with the adjoining properties behind it. But what what is putting it in the red for area and width? Is this just the overall averages numbers of the surveyed properties?
That's correct. So it's just that it doesn't meet the average as dictated by the four adjacent properties.
And as you stated, there's some skewing there anyway because of the pie-shaped lot in the corner. Okay, okay, thank you.
And I had one question on this same slide. The thirty-five-foot setback that's used to measure the lot width. I can't see the numbers.
It's shown in the dotted line right here.
Got it. Thank you.
And that would need to be adhered to the presumably in this in the subdividing of the lot would need to be adhered to those thirty-five setback.
So the front setback would be taken by the averages of the surrounding properties. But the the applicant hasn't requested any relief from that.
Contextual setback for the building of it, but they haven't got there yet.
Yeah, that's correct. But the applicant hasn't requested anything for that, so they would just need to meet those averages.
Yeah. Yeah. Great. Thank you. Would the applicant care to address the board and present his case?
Hey, good evening. I'm Jim Ilum. I'm a first moved to Dunwoody twenty-five years ago, now live on Dunwoody Club Drive, and now thank you for hearing our case tonight. The the basis of our case really goes to when this property was platted in nineteen fifty-four, it was two lots. And for whatever reason, those were combined into one tax parcel at some point, and now we're just asking to the board to return it to its original configuration. As Allegra said, the overall characteristics really put it in line with with the with the neighborhood. So I have studied their, the staff's report, very, very well done, very comprehensive, very detailed. So we're really just asking you tonight to confirm their recommendation of approve. And we appreciate it. With me tonight is the England family, who is the property owner currently. And they've owned it for many decades and now looking to sell. So again, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else want to speak in favor of this application? Looks like we have a couple. Alex, would you care to come to podium there? Thank you. Just state your name and address, please.
My name is Alex Slacky. I'm a neighboring property at fourteen twenty-one Noreen Circle. Been a Dunwoody resident for thirty years. I just want to voice my support of dividing this lot. If you look at the maps of all the lots immediately surrounding the subject property, they all fall directly in line with splitting this lot down the middle as James wants to do. So I'm just here to voice my support for that.
Are you on one of the immediate sides of the
Across the street.
Across the street. Okay. All right, thank you. Jerry, would you care to speak?
Hey. Thank you for letting me speak. I'm actually the house directly behind. So I'm at thirteen eighty-five Manjai Way. So it's to the, if you're looking at the the front of this, I'm the one on the left behind. So really, Jim and I were able to meet last week and talk. So that was not an issue, not a problem. I really conceptually have no issue with this. I think it does go back to the way it was originally plotted or platted. So that to me doesn't doesn't create the concerns. My only concern is what was built in the fifties was a one-story smaller house. We now have coming up the mega mansions that are coming into the to the area. So I'm assuming both of these are going to be trying to build a bigger and a a higher house, which again, doesn't really bother me that much. We've got them around us. I really don't have that big of an issue. My biggest issue is too far. And and we just need to to make sure I'm protected. The biggest issue I am downhill from this. So if you're standing on my backyard at my house, you're looking up. And so I've got a significant grade change from my house to that to the this property. So I need some hydrology studies done. I need to make sure that we're not going to create a river in my backyard once the new houses get built. So that's one of my concerns Jim and I talked about. The second one would be not wanting Disneyland in my backyard. So it's, you know, just some kind of a privacy fence. Jim has basically been kind enough to say that they would commit to putting up a six-foot privacy fence along the back of the lot to kind of give me some buffer from the new house. So those are my two kind of concerns. I mean, they're going to line up directly with my lot, so it's not going to be any different from where I'm at for what the new one is. It's just, once it gets to the point of laying out the new homes, I just need the city to be protective of. And and just as an aside, before I moved in, I've been there since two thousand sixteen. But before I moved in, the house next to me got redone. When they did it, they raised the level of the house. The people that lived there at the time ended up, the next time it rained, the whole bottom part of the house flooded. Because they had raised up and there was no drainage. So they had to come in and put a significant drainage in from my yard underneath the house next door into a creek. So that's what I'm trying to mitigate here is just to make sure that we've covered the bases, that there's some, if there's onsite retention, it's needed, whatever's needed to do this to keep me from having, because every time it rains now, I've never had water come down the my slope. So I just don't want that to change. So that's that's kind of my two points. Thank you for hearing me.
Sure. Thank you. And then, you know, again, we're not talking about the construction. There'll be other permits and so forth as they develop the property, right? Development permits and so forth. That'll address some of that, I would imagine. So, but thank you for voicing that. That's the only two I have, right, Steph? Yep. Anyone in opposition of this project? John, would you address the podium? John? John Kane? May have been. Twenty-one, twenty-two is John, John Kane. Okay. All right. He said Manjai Way. Okay, so.
Can you please speak in the
The last speaker, yeah. Alan was concerned that we didn't register the applicant or the speaker's name and address. I have Jerry Willis, thirteen eighty-five Manjai Way as the last as the last.
So you don't have to worry about it too much. Now, the the cards are just for your assistance and for our assistance in creating the minutes eventually. It's if someone wants to speak, they need to be here during public comment. If they're not here, they can't speak.
Right. Yeah, we're just trying to make sure that was recorded from the last the last speaker. All right. Close it. Board discussion?
That's a pretty straightforward. I mean, I think when you look at the plat that's laid out for the neighborhood, that it is the the subdivision is in line with what's already existing. So the lots seem to be almost identical, actually, to what's already there. And on a side note, I want to thank the previous speaker for sharing their concerns as as the large home goes up. And I would stay in touch with the builder and also stay in touch with the city, because a lot of times with these new large homes, they'll have them do underground water basins for the runoff from the homes from the roofs. So hopefully that should help address some of your concerns.
Can I ask staff to put the slide back up showing each of the lots? Just to reiterate a point.
This one or do you
On the next one.
Stars.
With, yes, okay, perfect. So first of all, I have to say that is incredible detail and thank you for the time that you spent calculating all that, because it gives us a really good picture of how many of the lots in this subdivision are unusual shaped and and therefore area and width versus how many of them are practically identical to what the property owner is wanting to do. And as somebody, I think Ryan already stated, and as the neighbor on Manjai Way stated, the two lots directly behind this property take up the same footprint as the existing property. And the two lots directly across the street, which I think we also had a speaker from one of them, are exactly the same width as what these, this particular property would be subdivided into. So just again, reiterating what staff showed us that the thirteen eighty-four Noreen Circle is skewing the contextual characteristics significantly because of its really unusual and and large shape compared to other lots in the neighborhood.
Yeah, this is a classic contextual comparison, right? It's it's all dependent on which ones are your contextual comparisons. In this case, if it was a street back, there wouldn't be probably an issue. But it is where they are located. And yeah, that pie-shaped lot is throwing almost single-handedly throwing, causing the variance. Yeah.
So I'm just going to provide provide some context of my familiarity with the neighborhood, because I am familiar with it. And I'm going to say this because I do have a question for staff, just leading up to the chicken and the egg kind of thing. So this neighborhood to me, it's it's kind of like a hodgepodge. It's tear down central in there. You know, it's all new stuff. An EF zero tornado came through there. I walked the neighborhood because it, I'm right off Womack. It came right through that neighborhood and that one house in the back corner took a pretty big hit. And I don't have any issues with what we're actually seeing, but I want to make sure that I'm because the subdivision of the lot is pretty cookie cutter to me. But the gentleman that just spoke not long ago about what happens after. I'm trying to understand procedurally, even if it's not under our necessary purview. Because there is, you know, you notice more and more teardowns as we become a city and there's not more land that's being produced out here and houses get bigger and bigger. And and things like, you know, tree canopy and things like that, whereas it's almost, I don't want to call it a free pass, but when you subdivide a lot or do a tear down, the cranes come out, the trees go down. But if you're an existing homeowner and you want to remove a tree or something, it's almost like you got to get an act of congress to do it or permission and what have you. So I'm trying to understand procedural, even if it's outside of our purview. For the gentleman in particular that spoke up about, hey, I'm For the gentleman in particular that spoke up about, hey, I'm, I have concerns. What are the procedural processes that happen after this point, should we grant a variance?
Yeah, so um it would become platted, um and during the construction process, the builder would need to adhere to all of our requirements, um and that would include doing some stormwater as part of this. Um, and so that would be an opportunity for um for that to take care of the of the concerns about drainage.
Okay. And that's, but that's not under the control of any neighboring properties. It's merely between builder and property owner, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that that's very clear to you as a neighbor, effectively saying you're going on a on a word versus with your neighbor, even if even in good standing versus a contract with a a developer who's trying to make money and build a home. Okay, so I just say that.
And on that note, the new homes are obviously subject to the same setback requirements. Front, rear, side.
That's correct. Yeah, these are the only exceptions that were requested. Therefore, the new homes will have to meet all other aspects of our zoning ordinance um as a standard for residential infill.
And are there, I'm assuming, um surface requirements, maximum?
Yep, there'll be maximum. It'll be the standard maximum lot coverage for each lot as well as the setback requirements.
Okay, thank you.
So all the one R one hundred standards for every even existing homes conveys, right? So but yes, they will have, as I said earlier, that to submit plans and and so forth and permits for the city, so that that's where that all comes in for sure. So all right.
All right, um, can I make a motion or is there more discussion? All right. Um, I move to approve the request for a special exemption from chapter twenty-seven, section one forty-seven, three to allow relief from contextual lot characteristic requirements, including lot area and width for a two-lot subdivision subject to the following conditions with the following conditions. Uh, cons- one, construction must be in substantial compliance with the submitted site plan prepared by Keystone Land Surveying Incorporated dated May twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five and drawn upon by the applicant, see appendix A. Two, if construction has not commenced within two years of the granting of this special exception, um approval shall be void.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a first uh motion to approve and a second. All those in favor? Unanimously approved. Congratulations. Will be on any other business staff? Public comment, no one signed up for that? Board, any comment? I would just like to uh emphasize what you had said. Well done on the packets, right, as always, but I mean, there was, there was some it was a little methodical getting uh getting the measurement of the entire neighborhood like that, not just the comparables, uh, you know, contextual comparables, so uh, as usual, staff did a fantastic job prepping us, so appreciate that. And with that, we are adjourned.